Hello everyone and welcome to Talk of the Town. I'm Karen Bukes, your host and producer of the show. And we're just sitting here having a number of laughs. We get along so well, we've been friends for 30 years. Please welcome my dear, dear friend, Selectmen Richard Quintero.
Hey Karen.
Hey Dickie.
Nice to be here. Hello everyone.
Oh, I love it when you come on.
Yeah.
Because we really get into a lot of stuff. I mean, you're so open and you're welcoming and you're not afraid to talk about anything.
No, no.
Matter of fact, you asked me if I would have Meg Sheehan on the show with you. And I said, sure Dickie.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what I said. So you arrange it for sometime in September.
I'll ask her.
You ask her.
I mean, I think it's...
No, on the up and up?
No, 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 absolutely, yes.
Be kind, professional, no monkey business?
No, and you know, we can't do any suits or anything naturally.
No.
But that's part of, you know, we have a conversation, we can talk about water, we can talk about whatever she wants to talk about.
Great.
Development, but I think it's my goal with working with Meg, hopefully, in the future is to get it so we work together. She's not 100% right, we're not 100% wrong, vice versa. But I think there's a happy medium and it would help the town as a whole move ahead. And that's what we want.
For you, I will do this and I will behave myself.
I don't know if she'll say yes, but certainly I'll ask her.
Okay, that'll be good. So let's get into Memorial Hall. You know, I am for fixing Memorial Hall. I just could not bear to see that building being taken down. It has a lot of history. I mean, if that building could talk, you know, and the veterans are there. But it's needed a great facelift and more for many, many years. And the can got kicked down the road. Derek is not willing to do that and I don't think the Selectmen are either. Talk to me.
Well, it was only presented to us, you know, just most recently, like you've heard on the CPC. And the price tag and in the area of, I think it was 21 million, but
At the time.
It could be more, it could be, you know, nobody knows. But we have agreed to, I suggested to Kevin and to Derek, that we should go ahead with this historical evaluation that Bill wants done, Bill Cohen.
Yep.
I worked with Bill for many years on the CPC when it first started. But anyway, that way they will know what portion of it's, you know, historical and we go from there.
Right.
I think we need to take our time.
Yeah.
You know, I was hoping and I recommend it also, pulling it from the fall, giving it time.
I was so happy.
Well, yeah, because we don't, we don't know, look at the numbers, they're flying around, we don't really know. I think we, you know, and then, you know, as it stands right now, I'll never vote to tear it down. Just to tear it down, I heard is already $5 million.
Oh, I heard it was more.
It probably will be. But we haven't evaluated it yet, so it's going to be expensive. We do have CPC funds for the historical part that we can apply for, just like anybody else.
We meet Thursday night to do this.
Right.
It's the day before the warmer closes, so we, this is an extra meeting for us. We're coming in just to do that, to send it to town meeting.
To have the historical...
For the study.
Yeah. And then we can probably get some more concrete answers and go, you know, we don't have to do it all in one day. But I mean, I did go through a walk-through there several weeks ago. And, you know, we went through the, we went through the whole place where the water's coming in and everything. And we learned a lot of history and I'm still learning. Every time I go in there, I learn a little more.
Yeah.
And it's been a part of the community for years. I mean, I can't picture driving down the street and not seeing that building there.
I even heard, you know, before Plymouth was a little town, we had a lot of land, but it was maybe 5,000 people, 6,000 people. Well, I think it was during the First World War, food shortage. So what they did was they got food somehow and brought it into Memorial Hall and passed it out to the people. I mean, it was always part of history here in Plymouth, of doing good things for the Plymouth people. I mean, I've been there for the orchestra.
Oh, the Phil.
The Phil.
Yeah.
Oh, just you cry, it's so beautiful. And a lot of people, you see the lines just going down the street. If you put in that commercial kitchen, baby, you're off like a rocket. You could do weddings in there.
Well, yeah, that's the thing, to do those kind of functions up in the Blue Room. And that's the first thing I noticed. So I seen Stephen Cole at the CPC meeting.
Yeah.
And I asked him in the hallway, which, you know, we don't have the authority to, you know, make decisions. But what do you think about maybe supporting for the kitchen? Then you can lease it out, you know, you always hear about leased kitchens, commercial kitchens. When it wasn't being used in the hall, they could lease it out, have income there. But you start popping weddings, you're talking $20,000, $25,000 on a event. But like that Blue Room, it doesn't have air conditioning, they have air condition stuck in the window. I think it was, yeah, Lynn Barrett was there that day on the tour with us. And she said, she asked her daughter, you know, maybe have the wedding there. And the daughter said to her, I'm not going to have a wedding here with the air conditioner stuck in the window.
And yet it's such a historical room.
It is, but for short money, you can put splitters in for now.
Yes.
Fix the kitchen and get the thing. So what the place really needs, and this is what I mentioned to everybody, we need to have a business plan.
Yes.
You know, a performer, and you know what, it can happen. And you know what, we say a dollar a ticket, who knows what that is yet, let's figure it out.
You figure it out, you have to have a business plan.
Yep, and while we're at it, I brought up, you know, even more money because the visitor's center, that needs, that's falling apart. I mean, you talk about neglect... To go into the restrooms, you're going to walk through the counter where the people are working to go, yeah. So, and we're always asked for large sums of money from Lee Filson, which is no bad eye for her. But I always say, no, that's not the answer. So we take that, we put that on the rear of Memorial Hall. Big issue on the VSB, all the time we hear bathrooms, bathrooms, bathrooms. Well, you know what, we can put those in there, put the, you know, I can't design it, but I got some good ideas, I've been to enough of them. But while we're doing this or thinking about doing this, this is the time to bring that building up to where we are today. And take the money from the parking spaces, if it's eight, nine, or 10, and put that money towards paying off that portion of the building.
Right.
And it would be a lot. And you say, well, how can I say that? Well, how would I say it if the town has an agreement with Park Plymouth? I mean, we dictate, but we say what we want in our RFP. And I know Desmond and the board, we'd have to run it by him. But at the end of the day, you know, they've been very good to us, Park Plymouth.
Oh, over the years, yeah.
Yeah, they built the parking deck for Town Hall.
Yeah.
That was all parking money, that was nothing to do with the Town of Plymouth taxpayers.
Right.
As a taxpayer.
I was appreciative of that.
Yeah, it was nice. I wasn't really happy about it because my dream about that money was to build the, a parking garage, get a shovel in the garage. You know, in the ground, whether it be downtown or behind Memorial Hall. But now's the time, you know what, and I think if you do that hall and you do it right, and you get some good shows in there, you'll have a private person come forward. We did have it, it was one of, I'll never forget, it was one of Bob Kraft's good friends, I remember it. Clear as day, flew in, he was going to do the parking garage there. And the present board at the time, we won't mention names, didn't want it because at the end of, I don't know, 30 years, whatever the lease was or the agreement, they didn't want the town to own it and have to start making repairs. But you still could have worked on that in agreement.
Right.
But it was just out the window, it never was, you know, and it's, that's the kind of stuff that hurts.
Guess what, we have a phone call. Hello, you're on Talk of the Town.
Hi, how are you? This is George in Manhattan.
Hey George.
Hey, big supporter, Mr. Quintero, big supporter of yours.
Oh, good.
Voted for you every time. And I think what they're doing there on the select board with, hold on a second, I'm sorry, the neighbor's cat just came in through my sliding door here. Get out of here, get out of here, get out of here!
Is this a joke? This was a joke. That was kind of funny. Did he hang up? This is the same guy that called when Derek was here, but he was Peter from Cedarville.
Ah.
Yeah?
The voice sounded familiar.
Yeah, me too.
But we'll leave that alone.
Did you get a trace on that call? Okay, write it down.
But anyway.
Yeah.
So we were talking about Memorial Hall.
Yes, and the parking...
The visitor's center, right.
The garage, the visitor's center. I didn't realize the visitor's center was so bad.
Yeah, it's very bad. So I mean, I only know because I sit on it and we talk about it every year, every year.
I know Stevie was saying something had to be done, but...
Well, I know they're putting new doors in and doing some, you know, facelift stuff.
Yeah. So what's going on with the power plant?
Power plant? We just keep meeting, they're doing a master plan for that. Whether it's 1,500 to 1,600 acres, somewhere in there.
Okay, my real question to you is, I know you're a big supporter of those...
SMR 300s?
Yes.
Yes.
I shared something, put your name in on Facebook because they were doing that all over Europe.
Yeah, they are.
And it's working out very well and they can use the old rods, talk about it.
Absolutely, they can. Yeah, it's a mini-plant, is what it is. And it's much more effective and safe how it operates. And, you know, we keep banking, I don't know, half million dollars a year. And I disagree with that because I think that they would be willing to donate a lot of that land for trails, open space. I've always said, a plant, a mini-plant or two on that site and let the rest be, you know, for the people who enjoy. I have an issue with that.
Would it benefit us?
Well, why do I say a couple? Because I like Plymouth, the town.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have a municipal, their own municipal power plant?
Yes.
Middleborough does, Hull does, there's many communities that do. So they probably would be open to that, you know. But nobody's ever actually sat them down and asked them questions, I think I was the first one. Not that they wouldn't listen, but I heard that some regulation just got changed a couple of weeks ago where one of Holtex's actual old sites just got relicensed, like boom.
Oh, in another state?
Yeah, when I was down there on a tour, I asked one of the regulators there, I said, you know, I got to ask you, with everything going, electric, electric cars in the new building codes, you know, where's the electric coming from? We're shutting down all the power plants. He said, that's a very good question. We get 38% of our power from Canada.
Yeah.
John Mahoney, I recommended several months ago to go to, there's a place up in the northern part of the state where they control all the power that comes in. And they even buy it like on a, I'll say daily because I don't remember. But they regulate everything from Canada to nuclear, to oil, to water, Fred. Wherever electric comes from, whether it's live or not, even like Pilgrim, it shows off, it shows, you know, what's going 10%.
Must be in the northwest corner.
It's right close to Connecticut because...
Oh, Connecticut.
No, no, right next to it because what would happen if there ever was an emergency there? Like just say a terrorist attack, if you will. They go down the street, half a mile, 30 minutes, and they're in business in Connecticut and it's all ready to go. It's on and ready to go.
Wow.
So it never misses a beat. But it was very interesting and we all went up there. I rented a van for us all and, you know, with my own money. And I took everybody up there.
Of course, with your own money.
But it was John's idea, John Mahoney. And it was quite, it was really something to see, it really was.
Well, you're always doing something like that. And you know, what I noticed, and you've been doing it for years, every Monday, you donate pizza funds at your establishment. You have one section's a farmer's market during the weekend.
Right.
Which is the cheapest and freshest, vegetables and whatever you could want. You get out of there what you might pay $45 for in a store for $18, $20. It's ridiculous.
We try, yeah.
But in the other section, you have, you cook food.
Yeah.
To takeout.
Right.
And talk about what happens on Mondays.
On Mondays, you can buy a couple pizzas and get two for $5 each, $5 a pizza, up to two. And we take the 100% of the $5 and we donate it, whether it's a family or, I mean, it's been so many.
Been so many.
But we've done it from day one. And we just got done with the La Boy Boy.
Yes.
And the number will actually come in tomorrow because our lady comes in tomorrow with a computer, Sharon, that runs upstairs. And but if we're right, I think it's going to be a little over $2,200, you know, that we raised for him on Monday nights. And we'll present that to the family. And he's home and he's doing better, so. I mean, he's still got a long way to go from what I read, but, and I'm not comfortable just, you know, saying, it's not for me to say.
God love him.
But he's progressing and I haven't met him yet, but I will.
Yeah, he looked like a fine young...
Yeah, I mean, there's been families that, you know, have a fire.
Burned out.
Exactly, and we raised money. And I remember there was a time where I even reached out to the town workforce, fire department, police, DPW. And they all pitched a little check and the kid lost his little motorcycle, if you will. And he was all upset about that and we bought him a brand new one. I still got the video of him, that they sent me riding around in the driveway.
Well, I know every Christmas, if you walk in on weekends, you have box after box after box of these big gifts that are going to families, the children. You know, bikes and big wheels and, you know, dollhouses.
We've delivered, yeah, bikes and scooters, everything for Christmas we have. I think last year was right, you know, Lindsay would know my daughter, but I think it's about 800 kids she did, which was a little much. I mean, we had the upstairs, downstairs, you know, and then there's a lot of that, you know, buying ship, you know, whether it's Amazon or whatever it is.
How many people need help?
There's a lot. And you know, I'm worried that more people are going to need help this year or this holiday, you know. Thanksgiving, we do all veterans.
The turkeys.
Yeah, we give every veteran that would like a turkey and a full meal, depending on how many people. We do a half pound of vegetable a person and usually we do a pie unless it's like too many and then we can't. But we do the rest of it, you know. And Roxanne, our veterans agent, gives us the list and we do the Plymouth ones first, that's our priority naturally. We live in Plymouth, so.
And you even helped a Ukrainian family that came?
Yeah, I did. And actually, it's funny you touch on that because her son-in-law is a firefighter.
Oh, how wonderful.
And his, her, the daughter worked in the tax collector's office.
Oh my goodness.
Yep. And so anyway, I hired her mom.
Yeah.
And her dad.
Yeah.
And they're both, and the mom's still with me.
Of course.
She went back to Ukraine for, I think she went for like six weeks or so, but she's back now, Toma.
Yeah.
Yep. Lovely lady, oh, she works, she loves me, you know, when she was gone, I gave her the vacation pay and she, she even told me that's not necessary. She had, through her daughter, you know, she interprets it. But she came back with a gift, a hat and...
You know, I was talking to Selectman Cohen yesterday, the day before. And he said, we talk about everything, you know, what he can talk about. And he said, you know, it, I've always known it, he said, but when people talk about Dickie, they always say his huge heart. I said, there's nobody that has a bigger one. I would say maybe Jeff Cohen, Jeff does a lot too, but your heart is magnificent. And you've never been stingy, even at your own. What happened to those pictures you bought, remember Lincoln Street? And they, those paintings or whatever were behind you, the Selectmen? And they didn't want them anymore and you thought, you're not going to throw those away, so you bought them all?
Yeah, I bought some of them. I even have ones from Paul McCalliffe that I have in my own office that, you know, I treasure them. Shirley Square, he did some nice shots there. Yeah, and I cherish those, you know. Actually, we're hanging up some stuff today because they just repainted everything, so.
Oh, good.
Everything was packed and now we're unpacking it. But a lot of memories, you know, as I'm packing, they bought Super Bowl stuff and, you know.
And I want to tell you that Everett Malaguti's doing a fantastic job on the finance committee.
Yeah, I knew he would.
I knew he would.
There was no question about it. You know, one thing about Everett, he does his homework and he really enjoys it. He really enjoys it, yeah, he does. He'll always be famous for Berkslaw.
Yeah.
In my, you know, in my eyes.
Yeah. But he's got a memory like a steel trap, he can go back years and years. Remember what you were wearing for crying out loud? And he knows this government, inside note. You know, Betty and I went to him and said, you belong in the finance committee. You, that's, you're going to get a lot done there. And it is, he does, he's fantastic on it.
Well, you know, that's Mr. Trifletti's appointments, he does that. And I, you know, I very seldom would say anything, but I, you know, I would always support Everett because I thought he'd be great at it. I mean, a lot of us did.
Oh, I called Trifletti and I told him that Everett, if Everett comes...
I wrote him a letter, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, we've got some good people.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I mean, and it's all volunteer. Dear Lord. She's, Dickie, let's say you were in charge of everything. No Tom eating nothing and you could do whatever you wanted, what would you do?
Well, first thing I would work on would be nuclear power, like I told you, the mini-plant.
Yeah.
And you give discount rates to the residents of Plymouth.
Yeah.
And not only that, the other plant, if there were more than one, if not, take what we got. And take that, I know at the time when the other one closed down was over 10 million a year.
Yes.
Put that on our tax base and help out our seniors and our working-class families, that would be the first thing. The second thing would be downtown. I would like to either have one way or take out one side of parking, tear up all the concrete, plant some grass, if you will. You hear a lot of the restauranteers.
Yeah.
Saying they miss the, you know, the lots outside, that the parklets.
Yeah.
And I just didn't care for the looks or the feel of the parklets, but if it's done right, and it could be, and we talk about our stability. And I know that, I can't think of the gentleman's name, the young gentleman that works for David Gould. He's got a plan, he's going to be planting a lot of trees.
Yes.
Cooling off, you know, and how everything's hot and they had a cool map of how it was all, you know.
Yeah, going to look.
Yeah, and I think it'll be great, even around Town Hall.
Derek loves it, yeah.
Yes, yep.
I like it.
So I sat with him and he showed me the whole program and I was very impressed. You can see it by some of the sidewalks, there's one at the Training Green, there's another one down on St. DeShaw.
Oh, yeah, the bump out?
The bump outs, yeah. And I was a little nervous with those with the snowplows because the guys were like, wow, we're going to be whacking them. But they put the reflectors in, so.
That mitigates traffic too, that slows it down, you know. And we got used to it right away.
And I think like on Friday night, if I, you know, was the one in charge, like, you know, coming down one side of Russell Street, I would block that off to the, even the first set of lights.
Yeah.
And just have it be like open market all on Friday, you know, Friday night and Saturday night.
I would love that.
People will go, you know.
Yeah, that's what they want.
And we're getting a lot of the right shops now, we got the Black Dog, you know, we have a lot of good restaurants in.
Oh, the sushi places that have opened up.
Yeah, sushi, all this, now we just got Tibetan, well, it ended up in North Plymouth, what is it?
Yeah, where is that?
Momo Hut, it's in the old little China restaurant next to...
Oh.
The Patty Shack, the Patty Shack.
I looked.
He bought that gentleman, yeah, me too.
And I don't see it.
I thought it was uptown, it's not, no, no.
Oh my God, okay.
And it's a good family, the same people that run the Lobster Hut.
So what are they going to be selling?
Tibetan food.
Oh, that's different.
Very close to Chinese, I ordered, they make these little, they're like Peking Ravioli, that's not what they call them.
No.
But they have chicken, they have beef, because I bought them all, I bought a little of, you know, to try them.
Is this all takeout?
Yeah, right now it is.
I have to try it.
And it's a hard-working family and I think they'll do very well. You know, they're starting to clean it up a little, you know, just getting in there, but they work very hard and it was very nice.
That's next to Patty Shack?
Yes, right next door, yeah. I can't think of the other place, was it Asian Tasty or?
It's downtown.
I forget. No, it's in North Plymouth, yeah.
Oh, there's another place.
It's right across from the Rio Steakhouse, which they just did all that nice remodeling, put that big patio.
You know, I miss going there, I used to go there.
It's nice.
It is nice.
Very nice.
They have great food.
Plymouth has every restaurant going, I think, we got Indian food, we got all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, we do.
So that would be the second thing I would do. And the third thing is try to land something that would be, you know, our tourist attraction is okay, our attractions, but we need something else in Plymouth, we need something else with our tax base. I haven't quite figured it out yet, but, you know, we need something that's really nice for the people.
Well, you know what Stevie used to...
And you know, everybody's going to blame us for the, all the building going on, but if they, you know, don't understand it, it's really nothing that we can, you know, before I finished up as chairman, I had Lee Hartman come in and I wanted Jason Silver to come in, the building inspector.
Oh, yeah.
And I said, I want you to talk about 40Bs, I want you to talk about cap and building caps, building permits, I want you to talk about all that stuff. And what do you want to do that for? I said, because the average person out there doesn't understand it. I go to more places and someone will say, you know, why are you? I said, it's not me, unless you buy every piece of land in this town, which we'll never do, we don't have the money, number one. And not only that, you still got to bring in tax revenue. But long story short is if you have a piece of land and it falls within the building code, you can build on it. You can change some of the code, but you can't, you can't go, you know.
The legislators have bought out. I mean, we collected all the signatures years and years ago, brought it to the legislature up in Boston. They don't want to get rid of 40B.
No, and that's why they have that. So communities have affordable housing and people have a, but what they don't figure out is it's more than just the affordable house.
It's blackmail.
It's the, it's the schooling, it's the transportation, it's the roads, it's the infrastructure. None of that comes with it and that's the hard part, you know, it really is.
Yeah, they don't listen to that part. You know, talking about 40B, oye, what's with this guy up at Colony Place? He wants to raise the height limit?
Yeah, and I don't understand it totally as far, you know, what the law reads on that. But I believe in the 40B that they can go a little higher, so.
And what about all the traffic that's up there all now?
That's the thing, people are fed up with traffic, I'm fed up with traffic, you know. I mean, I see on, I think it's Facebook that they're talking about Costco. Costco, whether it's gonna come to Plymouth or it's gonna go to Kingston, to me, it really doesn't matter. Go wherever you want.
I'd like to see Costco come here, but what about our water supply, all these big?
Well, with that forty B at Colony Place, uh, the town. Worked to negotiate, you know, a pumping station.
Oh, they have to build?
They, yeah, they're doing it. Yeah, that was part of the deal.
Oh, big whoop-de-doo now.
Oh, no, that's that's a few million dollars.
Oh, I know, and I don't mean to say that.
I don't know the exact price tag, but I'm gonna say it's like eight million, I think.
Okay.
Could be five, I'm, I didn't write it down, but.
And they're close to the highways and everything, uh, you know, so people could jump on.
You really don't see it until you you drive in there, because I live right in that area, you know, pretty close to that, and I was like. Looking for a vehicle or going to the Jeep place over there.
Yeah.
And I drove down and I said, oh my god.
I haven't really seen it yet.
You need to take a ride over there, because it, I'll tell you what.
Get in there. What is it?
You just go in there like you're going by like Walmart, you just keep going left. You can't miss it. Once you start down the road, you you'll see it.
So you go into Walmart.
Yep. To Colony Place.
You go down the road where those dealerships are.
They're right like right next to there. Yeah, I know, a lot of people don't, but.
Oh, my god, we'll never get out of there.
No, look at Long Pond Road, you can't move there.
Yeah, that's a mess.
And then we have the other development going in North Plymouth, um, on the Sheen Properties. Whatever you might call them, I call them the Sheen property, old beer warehouse, and then they got.
Yeah.
One piece on Prince Street, on Prince Street.
Yeah.
Then they got another one at the end of Prince Street. And I was talking to the neighbors, I did a walk through with that. And it was sad because I used to work at the warehouse, you know, and it's all like overgrown and. There used to be a duck pond there with swans and Mr. Motor. We used to call him Old Man Motor and uh my grandfather, Squinny. They used to take care of the animals and everything for the Sheen family. So.
Does all the Sheen family get along?
You know, I I, we don't, you know, I really don't know. It's what you hear, what you, you know, what you say. You know, when you get a family business, I mean, especially that family, I mean, that that's huge.
Oh, they really is.
In small little family business, you know, we're always, you know. So I can only imagine, I know I can't imagine something like that. But they've done very well and, you know, my grandfather worked for Tim Knife.
Oh, the grandfather?
Yeah, on the on the corner of the street. So he was there, he retired from there and they were good to him. He always. He had a watch when he retired, a television set, uh, a rocking chair. I mean, they they were good to my grandfather. And they were good to me, it was just that, you know, I was a young kid and I had two kids and. I couldn't get on the list, you know, and I tried, but I mean.
I used to know a guy who was a distributor for him, for the father. And he loved him. He said the guy was fantastic.
Yeah, they, like I said, I was a kid, so they all said to me. Quinto, I said, yeah, he said, go in Jerry's office and tell him you wanna use the telephone and call like SD's Auto, it was SD's Auto.
Oh.
I said, what do you want me to do that for? Well, see if they got to see her. So me, right?
Oh, no.
Yeah, he comes in in the morning like he did every morning. And uh, I I I didn't, I had no idea what they were putting me up to.
Yes.
So I did it.
They pranked you.
Yes, they did. So I went in there and I knocked on the door. He said, yeah, I said, uh, Jerry, can I use your phone? Mr. Sheen, I gotta call SD's Auto. So he went. He turned around. So I did the call. I hung up and I went out and I went in the warehouse, I went back to work. And they were hysterical that I did that. They did the same thing with me. We used to call it a broke room. You imagine, you have all these, because we used to work nights loading all these trailers and trucks. Me and Albert and that was, we were our own team. We had teams, the role is. And at the end of the night, you might have twenty cases of beer, then you have the. People that ain't so good at it, because you know, you get to the top of the trucks and you you get the beer bottle and you you bang it just right. And you squeeze it, you lock them in.
Yeah.
Well, every once in a while, one would pop, right, or you say, gee, what do you, I hear him talking. What do you guys want tonight? Because in the morning, that was our night, we got out of work at eight in the morning. They break a case of Michelob and we sit around the time clock after having them, eight o'clock in the morning, but it was nighttime.
Yeah.
And uh, so they said to me, they did the same thing to me again. They said, go down to the broke room, Mr. Motor, remember I just told you, Mr. Motor? He'd be in there and he'd get all mad because he's after, you know, depending how much was. So I'm on the forklift, I drive down there, right, I swings the corner and he went like.
Nuts?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
And I get off the forklift, I think I left it there. I realized what they had done to me.
Yeah.
And I said, don't you ever do that, I'll never do that again, don't you ever do that, because you know, it makes it look like I did it.
Yeah, so they jabbing the poor guy and you.
Yeah, well, they wanted, they, you know, I was the new guy, so.
Yeah.
I learned though, I learned pretty fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but it was a good time.
Now, your father started the business.
Oh, the Quintos?
Yes.
In my uh grandparents' basement, actually.
Oh, yeah, tell me about that.
They started um peel potatoes, that was his uh ready peel potatoes. My dad was, not because he's my dad. But he was so far ahead of him than the industry. In other words. If I had thought what he had thought of, but with my not being afraid to buy in a piece of equipment, I shouldn't say afraid, but. The willingness for the dice.
It was a risk.
Yeah, a big risk, it always is. And dad was just a little more, well, we'll just go a little at a time, but. With that, I mean, I'm talking forty years ago.
More.
I mean, we were peeling squash with little squash pills, then we made the machine.
Yeah.
Uh, and.
The hands would get so hurt.
Yeah, yeah, you you could actually peel it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, uh. But he was very, that's that's where it started, in uh my grandparents' basement on Nick's Rock Road.
Dear Lord.
Forty-four Nick's Rock Road, yeah. And could they, my parents met at Kavicki's Fruit and Produce that was in Whitman, Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Uh, my mom's from Whitman.
Yeah.
And my dad met her because he worked at Kavicki's. He was a truck driver, my mom worked in the retail store.
Yeah.
So it must have been something in the fruit and then, you know, here we are. There was five of us, um, I lost my brother four years ago.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And uh.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I still carry it on. No, uh, Mark was a good person.
And your mother's still alive?
Yeah, yeah, mom's going. Yeah, I talked to her last night and uh. Actually, my oldest sister and her her daughter just ended up down in Tennessee. My mom lives in Tennessee, so.
So they moved down?
My parents uh moved down there in nineteen eighty-nine with uh one sister, then after that, another sister went, so.
One of your kids moved to West Virginia? They were thinking about it?
No, they didn't think about it. They lived there. Yeah, they were just here for around Fourth of July.
So they, did they get a farm?
Yeah, three hundred acres.
Oh, my god, that, my dream.
Yep, and they love it. I mean, I got all kinds of pictures of the animals and they send me.
Kenny would say no. I would say, Kenny, let's get a farm.
Yeah, I tell you, I'm so happy for them and they love it so much, which is, it's kind of a good thing right now.
Yeah.
But um, I have yet to see it. I bought it from them.
You gotta go.
I bought it from them and then I didn't, I I never even went down and looked at the land.
You gotta go.
Oh, I am, so we're gonna make, right after the summer rush is over, maybe September, October.
Yeah.
We're gonna go down.
No, I always used to say to Kenny, well, I was, I had uncles that had farms and I love farming. I love it. I love the smell of the hay, I love the whole experience. And I would say to him, I'll take care of the farm, you can do, you know, if you don't want, you can work at your job. And he would say, no, if I could, I would turn my whole front yard into a farm. You know, but I'm up there in age now.
You know, with COVID, everybody's got chickens and now with this egg thing that just went by, I mean, people are buying little. I think it's awesome, I really do.
I was raised that way. I'll never forget, I think I was three. And my mother said to me, don't look out the window. Well, what do you do? Well, you tell a kid not to look out the window, what does a kid do? Look out the window. My grandfather at the time was living with us. So my mother went in the kitchen and I. Got the stool and I got up and I looked out the window just to see my grandfather chop the neck off a chicken. Didn't bother me.
It ran around, didn't it?
Yeah, my grandfather picked it up, put it down.
No, I know, I, well, I'm that age too, and I used to do that in the backyard.
And didn't bother me, but it bothered my mother. I got a whack on the fanny. And I told you not to look out that window, but you don't say that to a kid.
No, I know, but it was, it was different, yeah. Remember, we used to bury everything in the barrels, I mean, everything. And we'd love it when we get a a spray can or two, put that in there, that was a little explosion, that was like, you know, that was me.
Survive.
I don't know.
We had cars without seat belts.
Yeah.
You know?
I had to, uncle used to smoke with the windows up, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the kids, we had a station wagon and the kids were so little, they would dance in the back of the.
Yeah, remember that little seat they had in the back? She says, shove them in there, fit them in. Different now.
Uh, yeah, but, I mean, we grew up tough.
Yeah. Well, we didn't have, like, the cell, not saying it's a bad thing, but we didn't have the cell phones and the iPads.
I'm so happy. We had a great childhood.
We were outside.
Outside.
Stayed outside till the streetlights came on. That was time to get home.
Get home for supper, wash up. Well, when you came home from school, did you do your homework then?
Uh, actually, no. My mom would come get us with a car.
Yeah.
She'd wait till three, because I would get out, I was the oldest. So the two oldest ones would get home first and then the other ones later on. And now the car would get in the driveway and then everybody's in, off to work. Go work every day. And then we're done, go home, eat, homework.
Do homework.
Then bed.
No, I got home, had to do homework, then I could go out. You know, wow, it's fresh on your mind.
I mean, we didn't have to Saturday, but we still had to go to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, my dad was a hard worker. I'm a hard worker too, but.
Well, he taught you a work ethic.
He taught all five of us that, that's one thing I I will say all the time. I mean, if I wish things to be a little different, I mean, everybody does, you know. You know, but I also know in my head that if it wasn't for him, none of us would have what we have today, because we learned how to defend for ourselves.
You had good food, you had a roof over your head, you had two parents. This is how we grew up. We went to church.
Yeah, we used to go to grandma's every Sunday, every other, once in a while, miss, but she'd be cooking. Big meal every Sunday, every Sunday.
My mother did too, I did too, raising the kids. Sunday was a huge meal. But every night I made a nice big supper. I don't know how we ate like that, my god.
Well, that's how I used to uh learn how to cook, because my mom would be working and I'd start supper till she came home. Like I said, I was the oldest, so.
My son's a good.
They all made it in, they all were, you know.
My son's a good cook. Yeah, yeah, yes.
That's how I learned, I, you know, I work with my mom and I enjoyed it, so.
We were lucky, I think.
Yeah, with a different generation. I I actually think our parents' generation had it pretty much the best, I mean. When it all considered, you know, pricing, uh, wages, uh.
But didn't they have the depression? Well, that was twenty-nine, maybe not.
But I mean, they just seemed like, you know, it was different.
Yeah.
It was easier to get a house, it was, oh, look at the young people's dot now.
Sold homes, you know, prefab homes, and they looked beautiful.
There's a lot of good prefab homes.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what we'll be seeing, but then we got Atlantic Golf Club down in the southern part of town.
I was gonna bring that up, we've got fifteen minutes to.
We got Berets, we got a lot of little things going on.
So, first of all, I wanna know, are they back yet from Shishikahama?
Uh, not positive, I don't know.
You're a selectman, you don't know?
Uh, we were not briefed, uh, I never saw any itinerary this trip. Nor did I see any itinerary the last trip.
This is why Betty and I went crazy. You know, I'm not against Shishikahama at all, the kids go and few, a few chaperones. But it's out of hand.
I, like I say, I I I know the one, they, it's it's usually seven, eight days, so I don't even, when did they go?
Oh, I thought, oh, it was a week yesterday.
Okay, so they're probably either home or coming home.
They're on their way.
It's usually about a week, you know, eight days, nine days.
I heard one selectman say to me, I went once, I'll never go again.
Really?
Because it was too long, it was.
Oh, yeah, you don't stop. Even when they come here, it's the same thing. No, no, and they and they do a great job. We had a, I.
Oh, they're wonderful people.
Yes, they are, yes. So I will never say anything, you know.
Yeah.
Um, I was asked, Kevin asked me if I wanted to go, but you know what? Somebody always looking out for me, because I wanna go back one more time, whether it's with the town or not, I'll, you know. I'll venture over there, but uh I have friends over there now, but. The timing wasn't right with everything going on at work and my mom, it was just.
So talk to me, oh, what's the matter with your mother?
Nothing, I just, well, she has dementia.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But you know what, she's doing okay. She has been, yeah, she's doing a lot better than expected.
Good.
So, but you know, she has a, you know, failing heart and.
Say a prayer for her too.
But she's, she's done really well, but I hadn't even been able to get down and, you know, go visit her. Uh, just, you know, people on vacation and.
Tell me about Berets.
Berets, well, Mr. Cirky come in, I don't know, two or three times or.
I heard.
I think the last time he was in, I think he said four times, I don't know.
Yeah, I think he's been in four times over the same subject and it's wonderful that he did that.
And yes, and I said, you know what, it's time we we actually discuss this and do something about this. And uh, I said, if I have to make a motion, you know, so. That's what I do now, if I don't get recognized to speak, uh. I just pop a motion and I hope Bill Cohen will, you know.
He will, yeah.
You know, like this, taking the selectman thing on the road. I I I am not against that, but I will tell you, I just think. We, alls I wanted to do was discuss it.
Yeah.
And um, because I feel a round table would do the same thing. And keep our business in town hall where it belongs, people come, you know, different lawyers and. And then we didn't have no summer schedule this year and I asked the vice chairman and. He said, he said, Kevin said he's not doing it, we're meeting every week. I said, oh, okay. So I said, you know, that's nice to have, you know, a Tuesday off here and there in the summer. But anyway, we did, I think we had two offs, so that was okay. I just wanted to discuss it and, you know. But worse than that, um. I should have made a motion and and, you know, somebody should have seconded it.
Was the red come from your neck?
It did.
Up your face and you were quiet.
Because of all my years on a board, no matter who's the chairman, I've never seen. A select, a sitting selectman ask a question or ask to discuss something and it was told no or ignored.
Yeah.
Uh, I thought that was pretty, that's why I got upset, it wasn't.
So didn't everybody else.
And uh, you know what, I get over it, because I can go into that every week and and have that kinda attitude or, you know.
Yes.
It's like, you know, I have Mother Teresa on every, every day, I have three desks, one at, one at home, do it work, up and down. And uh, it says right there, don't be. Bad like the other person, something like that, but bring out the good and you'll be better than that person. And I just tell myself that and it's like, okay. You know, so I'm over it, things have gotten a little better. I find the communication's not really there, but it's not for me to, uh, you know.
Yeah.
It's just, and I don't understand it.
I've heard that from another selectman also.
Yeah, and and I I I did hear somebody else was talking about it that they didn't know that everybody, uh. All of us, we didn't get the same information and that's not a good thing, you know, and there's nothing productive about that, but. you know what, I gotta stay there and do what I think is right for the town, and it's gotten better. And that's that, you know.
Well, I'll tell you, um, the chair of the select board is the chair of the visitor's service board?
No, the distinguished visitor.
Distinguished, so.
Yeah.
But you know who does all the work? Len Levin. He does all his work, but he's never thanked. Not that Len has ever said a thing to me about it, I've heard it from other people. And I've noticed that nobody's ever thanked. And I just, it's odd and it's, it hurts. You know, we're not used to running things in that manner. I mean, I've been with government about thirty years. Never saw it like that.
Well.
I know, don't say it, what else, what else can we?
Atlantic Golf Club?
Oh, please, I hope he doesn't do what, I called him a political whore, whatever developer goes in there. Forty-B is blackmail. And they use that, they say it, and it's blackmail to a town.
Yeah, I, I've heard several different things off the record, uh, another one a couple of weeks ago. Um, but, you know, it came from a good source, but I haven't actually seen paperwork on it. I can tell you from a, from a town standpoint, there isn't a, a board member that's gonna be in favor of that.
No, or a town meeting member.
Or, or a citizen, really, a resident, um.
I say we should get five hundred people in march to Atlantic Golf Course. With signs.
I would like to, you know, go into some of the details, but naturally, because it's litigation, I can't really, no. Um, but I, I can say that there's no way, there's not a one of us that are in favor of that.
Yeah.
So.
That would mean, what, six hundred homes or sixteen hundred?
Whatever, yep, it's a lot.
On that little dirt road.
And the price isn't, you know, it's not realistic, and we can prove that, you can't just put, like, say, why not say fifty million? You can't do that, you gotta be able to prove that. And it can't be based on what might happen, it's gonna be what the actual, it's not worth twenty million. That I'll tell you all day long.
Oh, I know it isn't, can you sue the guy?
Well, we have options and we're, we're, we're going down that road, but, uh, we haven't got that far yet. You know, we're still in the beginning phases, when, when you do that, kinda offer to a community, you take it out of forestry and all that, some of the things weren't right, let's just say that. There's been several issues, let's, I can say that.
Doesn't it back up on the thousand acres?
Uh, yeah, but, uh, so until those issues are resolved, the clock hasn't even started ticking yet, let's put it that way.
Oh my god, I can't imagine all those homes going in there.
If I was, if I was the average resident, I wouldn't, you know, I'd relax right now. And we'll keep my breasts what's going on, but there is no, none of us are in favor of that, so.
Good, and next week, where are you? Where's the meeting, selectman?
I believe it's in Salt Elementary School.
Oh, off of Bourne.
Mm-hmm, now that's a Tuesday, and it just so happens that, uh, Charlie Blitzer and myself and some other people are doing a bereavement for a local family. Uh, I don't wanna, well, it's been on Facebook, on the Lalan family, Jack Lalan.
I'm heartbroken.
Lost his son this, uh, this week.
God bless, God bless.
So we're gonna be doing that Tuesday, so if I go there, I am probably gonna be a little late, and we'll see how tired I am, but.
Yeah.
That's already on the book for that day, I mean, I couldn't.
You had no choice?
No, and, you know, Jack's done a lot for me.
Jack has done a lot for the town.
A good person, yes, he has, so, uh, I'm gonna, Charlie again, that's how Charlie and I first met was.
I miss Charlie, I miss Charlie Blitzer.
So.
He was an honest, honest guy, to his detriment at times.
Right, right.
But he took the honest road every time.
Yeah, he did, he always said how he felt, you know, you have to be that way. Uh, people always say, well, you've been there a long time, so I just say it, you know.
You are the same way.
Joe Balboni, who used to be my neighbor on Nick's Rock Road.
Yeah.
His, his property butted my grandparents. And, uh, we all hung around there with kids, and, uh, I sat with him when I was gonna be a select, you know, run him for selectman, and he sat me on that bench, he said, just go from your gut, kid.
Yeah, be, be true to yourself and.
He said, and you'll be fine.
Yeah.
And I've always thought of that.
Have you seen David Malaguti?
Yes.
How is he?
I saw David probably two weeks, three weeks ago.
How is he?
He's doing okay.
Good.
He's retired, you know, but he still stays busy.
Yeah, I mean, I think he's doing something up at the cottage company, the history.
Oh, yeah, in the museum, with the Ahlarys, yeah, I think he is, absolutely, I think he is, yeah.
That's right up his alley.
Yeah, yeah, so, there'll be a lot going on in that area, not that there isn't now, but now with another, what is it, a hundred and sixty units going there? In a, in a half a mile.
Oh my god.
We actually did the site visit, they started on Prince Street, and then we walked down Court Street and, you know, down there to Hedge and Sandy Drive, and, uh, sure enough, the traffic was all backed up.
It always is.
And I said, I hope that the state's looking at this, you know, but it's the same in Long Pond Road, it's the same, you know, and I get why the people in Salt Plymouth don't want that there, I don't blame them.
I don't neither, it's, it's.
But you, there's one thing you gotta understand, that part of town is not built as this part of the town where we're sitting right now, and they're gonna go where the land is naturally, but we can buy as much as we can, and, you know, the CPC's done a good job of that, but there is gonna be development, but, you know, with that comes traffic.
It seems that development has never stopped, I mean, I moved.
Well, this town's so big, that's the problem, we're not built out, like other towns, you know what I'm saying?
We, we moved here in the early seventies, you know, when real estate was cheap and.
Yeah, it was.
Taxes were.
You, you could build a house and, and land for like eighty grand.
Less.
Well, plus you had the power plant, so, you know, they say, they blame the way that that went on, you know, you can look back and throw stones on anything. Uh, however, like, if we, that's one of the excuses I hear now, or one of the.
Yeah.
The fights I hear now as well, we should have learned our lesson last time, well, you don't have to do what you did last time.
No, you're smarter.
You can get the tax revenue, you can dedicate it, you, you can control, you learn by your mistakes.
John always said that, you dedicate it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, cuz you know, sooner or later, we're gonna need another elementary school.
And I hear a fire station.
Yeah, uh, the, I call it the Bat Cave down on Bourne Road.
Yeah.
I think Makepeace gave us the land, I think it was Makepeace.
I think so too.
Um, so that one really has to go, but we still gotta finish, you know, modeling the ones we've been doing.
Economic development.
Yeah, we do, that's, you know.
Real jobs, real high-paying jobs.
That's why on that Edward side, I even touched on it in town meeting, now it's dug down low.
Yeah.
Now, that'd be one area of town where there's no neighbors, right, to say.
Yeah.
There's every road you can think of right there, Route eighty, Route forty-four, Route three, all right there, within a quarter mile, right? That would be the place, if you wanted to go up some height, uh, you, you could do it and you wouldn't see it, because the way that topography is.
It's like that hotel.
That's why I'm not crazy about the Costco going there, unless, of course, there's, there are some level pieces of land there. But, uh, you know, that's what I was hoping, you know, and we need, uh, we've had, what do you call those, um, those technology companies that wanted to.
Data, data.
Yeah, that's it, the data.
Yeah.
Uh, they've, you know, they've been nibbling around, but there's not enough power phone.
They're coming.
Well, we gotta have power phone.
The power is coming too.
Right, well, we'll see.
You'll see.
But that would be, you know, a good, you know, and we've had other people knocking on the door that, that, that need the height in order for it to make financial sense, but I'm not saying all over town. For sure, I'm not saying that, but that to me, where it's all dug down, you wouldn't see it from anywhere.
Yeah, well, Richard Quinto, I love you, and I wish you were chair of the select board.
You know what, it, to me, when I had that job, honestly, you run the meeting, oh, I ran the meeting and I set the agenda, but it's a selectman's agenda, it's all five of us.
Well, maybe you can school the chairman, thank you, Dickie.
All right, thank you for having me, it's a pleasure.
Next week I will be here, um, with, uh, town manager Derek Brandisi. And in a little twist, if we can get away with it, thank you.